Good afternoon. I will call to order the meeting of the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District. And I will ask staff if the Kansas Open Meetings Act has been provided.
Yes.
Okay, may we have a roll call?
Bill Long, I.
Here.
Tom Toll. Carl Esping. Greg Linkowitz.
Here.
Trent Davis.
Here.
Mike Hoppick.
Here.
Jerry Ivey.
Here.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. We have approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from February?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve of the minutes of July 17th, 2023. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. New business. Item 4.1. Motion to move bank account to Equity Bank. Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Mayor. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. This item is on the agenda for the Lower Smoky Hill Water Access Supply District because they currently have their banking account still at Sunflower, which was the city's old bank account. The city moved their operating accounts and some of their subsidiary accounts over to Equity Bank last May after an RFP process. This is one of the last ones that we're trying to get under that same umbrella. In order to do that, the bank needs authorization, which is in the form of a motion in the minutes of the group. And since we haven't met since July, this is pretty, kind of, the first time we've had this opportunity to do so. So really, all I'm looking for, if you agree, is, agree to move that bank over to Equity Bank with the other City of Salina accounts, is a motion to do so, and we'll have that in the minutes and be able to provide that for the bank.
Is that, is that, what's the name of that account? Is that under Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
In that case, I move that we move the bank account for Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District Incorporated to Equity Bank.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the lower waters, lower access water supply district bank account to Equity Bank. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 4.2, discussion of the next meeting date.
So the next kind of items for the agenda for this Lower Smoky Hill as in the city is the budget. So what we'd like to do is schedule meetings for those dates. We first, the first meeting would be to go over the budget for 2024 and 2025, and to authorize the publication for the notice for those, and to review the 2026. The way the water district works is the Kansas Water District sends us their estimates for the following two or three years or so. And so we kind of look out a little bit farther because the district is actually assessing their members a little bit ahead of time. So we're looking to set a date to do that as one item. And then the second item, we're set, we're looking to set the date to actually hold the public hearing and make the approval of that budget, as well as elect officers. That way, we get our next two scheduled quarterly payments dates down, and we can put those on the calendar. So for the first meeting, we're suggesting May 3rd, or May 13th or June 3rd, if there's any comments or questions about that. And then the second one, we're looking at July 8th or 22nd. That would put them in two separate quarters. That way, we could meet our qualifications to have a meeting quarterly.
Martha, you wouldn't happen to talk to Tom or Carl, which works better for them? Because they're the ones, and they're not here today, but usually, they're the ones that either have something going on with Harvest, or, I don't know.
And what I'll do is, we'll pick a date, and then I'll see if they're available. Usually, they can take some time if they're working in the field, which in May or June, they can be busy. And I'll find out from them, but a lot of times, they'll zoom into the meeting if they're in the field. So they'll try to, try to match up with our schedule, is what they left with me. They couldn't say this far out whether it's a good day or a bad day. So they said, we pick, and they'll try to make it work.
I will, I know the business will be handled in my absence, but I do know in advance I won't be here July 8th. Now, you guys couldn't handle it, but maybe.
And my question was, is with our new meeting schedule.
This does go with the new meeting schedule.
Does, okay.
June 3rd is the first.
It is because the fourth, the fourth Monday of May is a holiday. So the new meeting schedule says that if it's, it falls on a holiday, it goes to the next Monday, which is the first Monday of June. So we'll have meetings on June 3rd and 10th that month because of that holiday falling in there.
That's kind of what I thought that June 3rd would have been the first.
I would say for the farm lobby, the May 13th and July 26th, or 22nd would probably be work best for them.
Yeah, I'd say they're done with week. I'll make that motion that we schedule the 2025 budget review for May 13th and the public hearing of the 2025 budget for July 22nd.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to schedule the next meeting of the water district for May 13th, and to have the public hearing, budget hearing on July 22nd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Unfinished or other business?
Mayor, I don't know if this is technically an unfinished or other business item, but since we do have some time, and I hope I'm not speaking out of school with Commissioner Ivey, but he very tactfully, I'm afraid, he essentially asked me, what is this thing? And so I tried to give him a little bit of an overview of this, and I put Martha on the spot a little bit, but it might be useful for anyone that might be listening at home, just to kind of recap how this came to be, and what we do, and what Martha and the irrigators in particular do on a regular basis. If you'd be willing to give a bit of an overview, Martha?
I'll try to do that without going too far back. And I would say that Mr. Binkston has written a pretty nice paper that we could share that would help Jerry kind of go through the history of it. And wouldn't you know, he'd have one in his hand. Who would guess?
This goes back to 2007.
Yes, it does.
Correct, when the river ran dry.
And, and all the litigation that we went through and working with the Kansas Water Office and the irrigators to really get to a decision. It took several years to get to even the process to form the access district. And once it was formed, the, I think the short story of it is, it's somewhat of an insurance process for all of us. If there is no water in the river, we can call for water out of storage in Canoplis Lake to be released for us to use for whatever's short in the river. Canoplis Lake has a discharge schedule of how much water they let out every month. And I might be rambling around, but I'll try to get to the point. And so in the winter months, it's 10 cubic feet per second, and in the summer, it gets up to 50 cubic feet per second. So that's really the amount of water that they are required to release to meet the life in the stream, water quality, and ecosystem. And there's times when that amount of water's not there just because there's no inflow into the, to the lake. And we're in that situation right now where they drained the lake down to actually repair the, the rock on the face of the dam. And so virtually, we've been three foot below their, what they call their normal operating pool for quite some time now. In fact, in July last year, we were at 1461.7, and that's where we're at today. So we're, you know, a little over two feet below the operating pool. And what's important about that, at that elevation, there's a V notch weir. If the water level's above that, it lets out a certain volume of water through a V notch. So the higher the lake is, the more water it lets out. So that water's over and above what they're required to let out through the gate. So really, we, back in the, when this first started, the Kansas Water Office wanted to reduce the amount of water that they were going to release and change how the whole operation was. Well, it created enough of an issue with the city and all of the irrigators that we went through. Several years of a process of looking at, does the groundwater and the surface water and the river relate to each other? And then it actually took legislation to allow us to put this access district in place. And it's virtually kind of one-of-a-kind process in Kansas. And that's kind of the overall operating piece of it. And if there is, in, we haven't had a time in the past when there was a drought, very little water. This access district wasn't in place, but we worked as if it was. Were the irrigators and the city, Kansas Water Office, Kansas Department of Ag, all the interested parties in the water and the river called each other and talked every morning to decide who needs how much water to try to best preserve the water in the lake and not let out more than we needed, but still enough to meet our needs. So that's why I call it an insurance program to kind of help us in times of drought. And who knows where we'll be this year? And I would guess, that's kind of the operational part of it. Mr. Binkston, do you want to add something? You've got closer to the podium, which would appear you have something to say. So please feel free.
Thank you, Martha. I hope it's noteworthy that the paper that Martha referred to was the result of an invitation that I present in a seminar, an American Bar Association seminar at the national level that was conducted in Denver back in 2019. It was significant, and I was asked to serve on that panel and to speak because of the unique nature of this cooperative effort between a city, an urban area, and rural irrigators. That is usually the source of clash, as you might imagine, in terms of the prioritization of the water utilization. And in our case, I was quite proud to represent the city and this entity in describing how it was that, on a cooperative basis, this dilemma was addressed. And if I may, the abstract or the summary of that paper, I think encapsulates, covers some of the things that Martha spoke to, but if it would be of interest, I can read that, I think, quickly, if that's appropriate, Mayor. In 2006, Kansas experienced a drought event in which the Smoky Hill River reached record low flows of 1.3 cubic feet per second. Considering the anticipated effects of climate change, future droughts in Kansas will likely be even more extreme than those experienced historically. With the 2006 drought event in mind, water right holders downstream of Canoplis Reservoir, including the City of Salina and numerous irrigators, recognize the need to respond to this threat cooperatively or face inevitable future low flows requiring allocation under the state's prior appropriation system. The agencies responsible for management of water resources in the state responded creatively by initiating the legislation necessary to establish the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access Program. The program authorized the creation of the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District and authorized the Kansas Water Office to contract with the Access District for access storage in Canoplis Reservoir. The irrigators and the City of Salina agreed to the formation and operation of the Access District. The formation and implementation of the Access District illustrates a unique instance in which municipal and agricultural water users came together to enhance the resiliency of their water resources. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Binkston.
I think that's a pretty good synopsis of what we went through for the 10, 10 years that it took to put that in place and actually have it work. To date, we haven't officially used the Access District to any large degree. Last summer, we, the irrigators needed about five cubic feet per second for topping off some of their needs, and the city took five cubic feet per second out of our, our water bank to work with them because if they didn't, if they use their water to help keep the stream wet so that more water would make the flow to Salina, so we worked together on that also. But we communicate a lot on, when we're in a situation of low, low flows in the river to, to do the best we can for the City of Salina and for the irrigators to try to match up. Their, their needs are typically pretty heavy in July when the corn crop is trying to develop the ears and so on. So that's our prime time for them. Other than that, they're, they can back off a little, and we can match up better.
Well, I did my homework on this, since this was my first time chair in the district.
Okay.
And I was surprised that the lake level is at 1461.7, which is right about
That's correct.
a foot and a half below conservation pool. So that's encouraging to me. And we had 15, or 25 cubic feet coming in and 15 going out.
I'm sorry.
That information is available on the core website.
So with the 25 cubic feet coming in from the amount, small amount of rain that we had, of course, that's adding to the lake, other than evaporation and such. And they're following the lake manual for releases, and it's 15 cubic feet in March. So that's where the 15 cubic feet comes from, right at this time. And as we move through the summer, we'll reach 50 cubic feet per second that they'll release.
Well, we hope the rains keep coming.
More, more rain. Unfortunately, it usually seems like we get a flood to fill the lake, and then we're in business for a while. But I would prefer a nice one-inch rain every week, and that'd keep everybody happy. But I doubt that happens for us.
Thank you. Is there anything else? You entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn the meeting of the Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District. We are adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 11th, 2024, meeting of the Salina City Commission. I will ask staff if confirmation Kansas Open Meetings Act required notice have been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mayor Longbine?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hopick?
Here.
Commissioner Ivey?
Here.
Commissioner Langwitz?
Here.
May all who are willing and able, please remove your hats and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to flag in the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, we do have a large presence here today, so I'd ask you to please silence your cellphones. We have no awards and proclamations or public hearings. Commissioner Hopick would like to-
Yeah, Mayor Longbine, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda for today. We have two items that affect Prairie Land Market. One of them is item 6.4, and the other item is 7.4. I would like to move item 7.4 up to become item 6.5, since they're dealing with the same location. And I'll make that as a motion.
Sex? Okay, we have a motion of second to amend the agenda to move item 7.4 up to, and make it 6.5?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the consent agenda, which is once again quite lengthy.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of February 26, 2024. Item 5.2, approve the minutes of the special meeting of March 7, 2024. Item 5.3, authorize an additional contingency in the amount of $6,223.95 to project number 23037, 2023 new sidewalk construction. Item 5.4, award the bid for project number 24009, 2024 street markings to Heartland Traffic Services of Kansas City, Kansas, in the amount of $69,406.55, with a 5% construction contingency for a total project authorization not to exceed $72,876.88, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Heartland Traffic Services of Kansas City, Kansas, upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. Item 5.5, award the bid for project number 24007, 2024 mill and inlay to APAC Kansas Shears Division of Salina, in the amount of $1,169,022.20, with a 5% construction contingency, for a total project authorization not to exceed $1,227,473.31, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with APAC Kansas Shears Division of Salina, upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents. Item 5.6, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Iron Insurance Partners for broker services. Item 5.7, consider approval of amended development agreements with, item 5.7A, the Mark Augustine Trust, addressing current and future sidewalk and street improvements to South Ninth Street, abutting the Augustine addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas. Item 5.7B, the Salina Health Education Foundation, addressing future sidewalk and street improvements to North Ohio Street, abutting the ADR addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas. And item 5.7C, Beck Superior Hybrids, Inc., addressing current and future improvements to North Ohio Street, abutting the Beck's addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas. And item 5.8, set a hearing date to consider an appeal of the planning commission's denial of conditional use permit, application number CU24-1, filed by Kalabhamun on behalf of VIP Smoke Shop, seeking approval to establish and operate an electronic cigarette establishment, aka vape shop, and tobacco shop in a C5 zoning district on property legally described as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Hoffman addition, plus adjacent vacated right-of-way in the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as 2018 South Ninth Street.
Thank you. Isn't our clerk a wonderful reader? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Is there any item Commissioner would like to have removed?
I don't know if it needs to be removed, but 5.8, would that read better if the date of March 25 was added in to that much? Otherwise, we would have to take that out to set the date.
It certainly wouldn't hurt. That is the intent, is setting March 25 as the date, and if you want to make a motion to approve the consenting agenda and add that insertion simultaneously, that should work.
Okay. I believe that may have been in the, in the packet.
Well, it's in the blue sheet, but it's not in-
It's not in the-
I don't know which-
Summary of the consent agenda.
Which color sheet of paper carries the greater weight?
Add it to your motion.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda with an amendment to item 5.8 to set March 25, 2024, as the hearing date.
Second? Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda as read, with the exception of item 5.8, to set that hearing date at March 24, 2024. May I?
The 25th.
25th.
March 25, 2024. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. That will bring us to administration. Item 6.1.
Item 6.1, authorize the acceptance of the 2023 People's Choice Sculpture, Phoenix Rising, by Jody Bliss, for placement on public property.
Mr. Anderson, or Ms. Hammerschmidt?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Crystal Hammerschmidt. I'm the Art Services Coroner with the Salina Arts and Humanities. We are asking that you authorize the acceptance of the Phoenix Rising by Jody Bliss, as the People's Choice Award this year. We do have a goal to place this over at Oxbow Park, and Oxbow Park is east of Crawford, or, I'm sorry, south of Crawford, east of Ohio. It's in a smaller neighborhood, in a park that also will be receiving new playground equipment this summer, so there's going to be some improvements over there. It's also aligned very closely to a major trail in the city. The CAD Committee had some considerations. We looked at a lot of different locations, and also Jeff Hammond has been attending our CAD meetings to help kind of align our public art placement along with Park's master plan. So we considered multiple locations on the placement for this one. There's a lot of places under construction, so we wanted to be mindful. There was new concrete over at Oxbow Park that used to be a water feature, so we're not going back to a water feature, so it was an ideal spot with the new concrete. There are benches over there for the viewing. It's clearly not a part of the playground, so we were definitely considering the safety in the long term of this sculpture over there.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? Well, I looked at the location, and I am not crazy about the location you chose. And I think it is one of our least-used parks, and there's no lighting there. What other locations did you look at?
So we, one of the first spots I went to, I kind of did a tour of some of the parks that we don't have a lot of artwork in currently. Jerry Ivy was one of those first spots. There's some major stuff happening down the road, so we didn't want to think about pouring concrete over there, not only for that financial, but the labor that goes into installing. Centennial Park, thinking about that Friendship Center that's over there. Dennis Arnold did say that that gets a lot of use over at Centennial, but there are not a lot of great spots over there that also offer ADA accessibility. With the CAD Committee, part of our goals are to think about getting public art into communities that don't currently have outdoor sculpture or public art that is as readily accessible, and it really is the goal to think about making that work accessible across the community. So there was Friendship, or the Friendship Center, Centennial Park, Jerry Ivy, Oxbow, oh my goodness. And Schilling. So Schilling was a really good option. It's by a school. It's in a community that we don't have a lot of public art existing right now, thinking about moving, you know, beyond the downtown, but that's also in construction. So we would have had to think about pouring concrete over there, but moving that due to construction down the line. So as Jeff has really participated in our conversations, us trying to align not only with putting art in new neighborhoods, but that Park's master plan has really informed some of these decisions as we're looking at spaces. So, we're very open to suggestions. Lighting is not something that we considered. There is an option. There is not currently any surveillance at that park, so that's been a discussion with Jeff, that there's a possibility at a very low cost to get some surveillance in that space over there. But if that's not the most desirable, you know, a goal is to make sure that we're pushing public art into communities that don't have the access that maybe we do in the downtown and those surrounding neighborhoods. So looking for their suggestions that, again, align with those goals. And accessibility is a huge part of this. There's, you know, somebody being able to get close to it and sit with it. You know, it's easy to get downtown, but some of those parks just don't have the accessibility to put a piece like that, and it's pretty large. The base of that, I think, is a four-by-four base, so we've got a significant footprint for this piece.
Thank you for the explanation. Just from my observation, it was, I don't know what it would take to put some lighting in there. This piece is so nice, you know, it'd be nice to have it lit.
It is. It's a, it's a beautiful piece. It's highly detailed. There's a lot of color. I mean, it looks beautiful in the sun, but when the sun's not out, so that could be part of the conversation as far as safety, both surveillance and lighting. I didn't, I did not pay attention to the lighting, like what that was. I've been at that park during the daytime, so, yeah.
Any, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Any public comment?
Ben Wenhell Salina. Take that piece of art, add $5,000 for concrete at the new fire station, put it there, take the other $395,000 earmarked for art, and put it back into the fire station itself.
I'll bring it back for action. There's no further comment?
Mr. Mayor, move to authorize the acceptance of the 2023 People's Choice Sculpture, Phoenix Rising, by Jody Bliss, for placement on public property at Oxbow Park.
Second? A motion of second to approve the acceptance of the 2023 People's Choice Sculpture into the public collection and placement at Oxbow Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item 6.2.
Item 6.2, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with South Ohio Land, LLC, regarding the city's participation in the local match under the application to the Kansas Department of Transportation Economic Development Program for Project McIntosh, and approve submission of a grant application to KDOT.
Mr. Robinson?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm here definitely to talk about this application and the opportunity that Salina has for some additional investment from the private sector. For going back into late 2023, city manager, myself, James Hall, with South Ohio Land, have been working on this project to put together a grant application for approximately 1,300 feet of street off of South Ohio into the development there. That will all provide locations for two companies to move their businesses. One, both of the, both of these are existing companies that are here in the community, but it will maintain them and let the second company grow. The investments are, the smaller company is currently in a 9,000-square-foot building, and they're going to expand to a 30,000-square-foot building, and they'll also be able to add some additional equipment with their project, six new CNC machines, and some other items. The larger project is a $15 million investment. They're a little more advanced in their timing. They have a very short timeline to get this project moved forward, and so when Mr. Hall came forward to the city manager and to myself, we, I've been working with Department of Transportation, I almost said Commerce, but Transportation on their economic development program. So we've used this program a couple of times over the last seven years. There's also another economic development program that the state has, but what we're looking at, if you go to the third page, you'll see the cost numbers on the project. So we're looking at a total grant project of $2,6,556.50. Part of that is local match, the city's part. The total match is $546,890. As part of that, the city had a previous agreement with South Ohio Land to install a second concrete culvert into the facility, and that was negotiated out between the city and the developers. The city will invest $212,000 with the remaining $334,890 provided by South Ohio Land. And this will also, if you want to put the map up, please, this will also provide additional industrial sites, business sites, for the community in the future, so. So, yes, right, right where the cursor is, is this general area. You all have a map within your packet that will show where Project McIntosh is currently located. So we've been working on this for several months. The package also includes the cost estimates from Call Valley for the construction of the street, the implementation of all the sewer drainage. The utility aspect of it will be taken care of by the developers, and this will be what's part of their investment in terms of, of the match, the local match will be provided via the equipment. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you all have at this point. Mr. Hall is here as well, and he can give you a lot more details on the inside aspect if the companies at this time are not ready to make announcements on who they are, but we'll be looking at that very quickly, once this grant goes in and we have, we have an answer from the Department of Transportation, so. Does anybody have any questions? I guess I'll ask that for Mr. Hall.
Do you have a timeline on, I guess, when the grant will be reviewed?
Yeah. The, Mike is, if you go to the third page, I think the fourth page, there's a signature page, so as soon as that, we're ready to get this submitted into KDOT this week, hopefully. It may end up being next week, but that'll take about probably 30 to 45 days, depending on their grant review cycle. They try to review every quarter. If we can get it in this month, we ought to be able to get in this quarter, we hope. So their intent on the larger, the two projects, the 15 million, they're under, under the gun in terms of needing their building up and, and moving as quickly as they can. So I would say later this spring, we ought to have the announcement from, from that, from both companies, actually.
Questions from Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Where does this stand with our usual desire to have, you know, future job growth? I mean, the usual criteria that- I mean, the usual criteria that we consider?
Yeah. That's generally what we have used that form is for our industrial revenue bonds. So this does not have any industrial revenue bonds. There is no tax abatement going on with this project. But if you look at the wage levels on page six, shows the average wage levels for both of these operations. So this is split into two projects. Project Spark has a wage level of $48 per hour for those segment of their people that will be based out of this facility. And then they have engineers and management personnel that make more than that. And then Project HS, for their starting apprentices, they're at $18 to $19 an hour. And then you get into the machine operators, $22 to $25 an hour. And then for certified machinist, you're at $27 to $30 an hour. So county average wage right now is a little bit over 18. So other than the entry-level positions, these are all above those numbers.
Right. But now, these are jobs that are already in the community?
Yes, these are jobs that are already in the community. There is going to be growth from Project HS. They've not been able to determine at this point, when we first talked about exactly how many new jobs will be. But as the company grows, they're going from a 9,000-square-foot building to a 30,000-square-foot building. And they have gotten some new contracts recently, from what I understand, with some local companies that'll be able to provide them additional growth. And that's the purpose of the expansion.
Now, I'm assuming the local match of $546,000, we could put in parenthesis, City of Salina? Or is there another source of that money?
No, part of, the 212,000 is what the city is going to be investing in. The agreement, and this may be more for the city manager, the city attorney talking about, there is a signed agreement between the developers and the city. 212,000 is what was agreed to previously was this concrete culvert. And that's been estimated at $250,000 investment. And that part was negotiated to 212,000 is what the city investment will be.
If I read this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, this, we're approving this funding agreement and approval of submitting this, but the total cost to the city will be no more than 250. In fact, we anticipate it being less than what we've already obligated ourselves to.
Right.
That's correct.
So in 2003, there was a development agreement that was entered into between the city and South Ohio Land. That agreement committed us to install two box culverts on the north-south drainage dish that runs through the development. One of those has already been installed. The other one is an outstanding obligation of ours. So if we didn't make application for this, we'd have that obligation from 2003 to install the box culvert at an estimated cost of 250,000. This is an application for funding all of the infrastructure, essentially. The first item that's on your agenda is entering into an agreement with South Ohio Land where we essentially would pay 85% of the cost of that box culvert. So instead of being 100% responsible or 85% responsible, the remainder of the local match is to be provided by South Ohio and others, but it's South Ohio's responsibility. So it recognizes a net cost savings to the city, and then we're making application to the state Kansas Department of Transportation for grant funding for the remainder.
Yeah, that's almost a million five that will be brought into the community via Department of Transportation, so.
And that explanation sounds great. Just the way it looked on page three here, fine print, a little bit nice to have in there.
Well, frankly, without the agreement, without breaking this into two parts and having the agreement between the city and South Ohio Land, your assessment of that would be correct. That would be a local City of Salina requirement.
So we're basically contributing money we had planned to contribute anyway, and it's not coming out of our economic development dollars?
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Hall, would you have some input?
James Hall, South Ohio Land. Thank you all for considering this. As Mitch said, we started several months ago. We were made aware of some grant opportunities that were available through the state, through KDOT. Have done a tremendous amount of research on this. It's been vetted out through the representatives at KDOT. They all agree that what we are applying for is legitimate. It fits in the niche that they want to fund with this. So over the past several months, we've all been working together to put this grant together, and we're here today to submit it and hope you all will sign it for us so that we can go have a shot at getting this money. Any other questions?
Questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I believe we have two action items. The first one, Mayor Longbine, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with South Ohio Land LLC regarding the city's participation in the local match under the application to the Kansas Department of Transportation Economic Development Program for Project Macintosh.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with South Ohio Land LLC regarding the city's participation in the local match under the application of the Kansas Department of Transportation Economic Development Program for Project Macintosh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Second part of this application, Mayor Longbine, I move we approve submission of the grant application.
Second.
A motion is second to approve submission of the grant application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It'll be exciting to see that land developed.
Bring us to item 6.3.
Item 6.3, approve ordinance number 24-11198, amending City of Salina municipal code provisions for the keeping of chickens in city limits.
Mr. Hennessy.
Commissioners, Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. What you have before you now is ordinance number 2411198. This is an ordinance amending several different components of our existing code and adding several different sections. Very brief background, if you remember, back in November, we had a study session discussing this topic with chickens. Following that, we received input from the Animal Control Advisory Board in February of this year. And then on February 12th of this year, we looked at a fairly comprehensive ordinance in regards to the chickens and received direction from the city commission that they wanted to look more at focusing on the 10-foot setback and several other provisions within the code. So that's what this ordinance encompasses. And if, you'll go ahead and pull up the ordinance, I'll go through them point by point. Again, there are two new sections in this code, and then there are revisions to three current sections within the code. The first one you see in the highlighting, under section 731B4, this is a new provision that would require that chickens are not allowed to be in any area that is closer than 10-foot to the owner's lot line. So this would essentially be a 10-foot setback that anyone keeping chickens would have to meet. So that would be a new addition to the code that is not currently in place. Number five is also a new section that clearly delineates that chicken coops, tractors, and runs shall only be in the rear yard area that is fully enclosed by a fence and not in any front or side yard area. Notwithstanding this, any dwelling on a corner lot may have chicken coops, tractors, and runs in a side yard, provided the chicken coops, tractors, and runs are located behind the home. All distance requirements will need to continue to be met for the corner lot dwellings. The reason, so this would be an additional new component to our code. The reason for the definition for the side yards, because the way we treat a corner lot in the City of Salina, for example, if you want to place a sign on it, if you're a corner lot, you don't have technically a backyard. You have two side yards and two front yards. So if we say as a new component, you can only have it in a backyard, we'd be banning all chickens for corner lots. So what this, this requires chickens to be kept on a backyard, but it makes an exception for those homes on a corner lot, which would allow them to be kept in that case in what would constitute the side yard. So I realize that's kind of confusing, and sometimes when you look at a house, even if it's on a corner lot, it's like, well, that would be the backyard. But the way that we treat it is, it's actually a side yard. You don't have a backyard. So those are the two new components to the chicken ordinance. There are an additional three revisions to the existing code. So if you'll go ahead and move up to the 733A. What this one does is it clarifies the existing language. For example, in 733A, it says that you cannot have a chicken coop within 50 feet of any building occupied by or in any way used by any person. This is a very broad standard that is very, very difficult to enforce. However, we wanted to be recognized, the fact that we still wanted to maintain that 50-foot separation. So the new code component says that it cannot be within 50 feet to the nearest portion of any dwelling occupied by any person other than the dwelling occupied by the owner of the animals. So the chicken coop could be within 50 feet of their own home, but it could not be within 50 feet of another occupied dwelling. 758A is a new modification to the existing one. The current code requires that you cannot have chickens that annoy any neighbor. And that, again, is a very, very broad standard. So what we've done is incorporate that they've got to be free from debris and odors which are offensive to a reasonable person of ordinary sensibilities and which adversely or unreasonably interfere with use and enjoyment of property by emanating or crossing any property line. This is in regards to any of the odors from the chickens. So this adopts that standard, which is a pretty standard, a pretty common standard when it comes to any kind of a nuisance or odor situation that you may be facing. The final revision is more of a technical revision. If you look in 758E in the original text, it refers to the public health officer. I mean, clearly, this code was drafted before there was the separation of the public health. So what this does is makes it clear that you'd still be subject to inspections, but would not be performed by the county public health officer. So that is just basically a clean-up to make that clear in regards to those components. Now, because of the two additional sections that are being added, this ordinance, as it's currently drafted, would not go into effect until the 1st of January of 2024. This would allow people to move their coops if necessary and to erect the barriers that may be needed to get the 10-foot setback. However, you have the ability to change that date, to accept any of these modifications, to add new modifications. That is completely up to you as far as the timeline or whether or not you wanted to accept some of these modifications or not. With that, I'd be open to any questions that you may have.
Questions?
One, I believe there was one instance where two neighbors decided to declare joint ownership chickens. How does that affect the 50-foot, if one of those houses happened to be as close to the property line as it could be, and, you know, it was less than 50 feet?
Well, if they executed a declaration of joint ownership, then the chicken coop could be within 50 feet of an adjoining, of an adjoining home, because they would be asserting essentially that they both jointly own the chickens. Therefore, that 50-foot restriction does not apply. Oh, yes. This is the graphic. I did not have the hatching on the original one that you saw in your packet. I did add the hatching. This basically shows where the front yard, this is for a corner lot. I actually don't know exactly where this, I just asked the GIS department to find me a corner lot. So this is a corner lot, but this is the way we treat it with the two front yards and the two side yards. And there will be inevitably some bizarre lots. I've seen them teardrop-shaped and triangle-shaped and otherwise. So that is going to be basically determined upon the structure of the house and where the address is facing to the street and otherwise. These is, this corner lot and your, quote, typical home, this is going to be 99.9% of the homes, but there would have to be that teardrop-shaped lot or something else, potentially if the home is diagonally or something. That's when you'd have to look to figure that out. But that would be on a case-by-case basis.
So with the code language indicating on a corner lot, it's allowed in a side yard behind the home, the crosshatching represents the portion of that corner lot that would be eligible to have chickens. The 10-foot setback from the property lines would still apply.
As would the 50-foot separation from any other dwelling.
And who will be tasked with enforcement? Is this code enforcement or animal control?
It would be, well, it would be a combination of animal control. They would be looking at this, making determinations. There may be instances where they may have to bring in some help if they had some more technical questions, but it probably would be animal control taking a look at this and making sure that they're in compliance. This is a section that is under animal control.
Questions from Mr. Robinson? I thank you for all your work and efforts in this matter.
Certainly.
Hey, the light came on.
Lights came on. Is there any public comment? Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Kevin Hayes. I sent you all a email with a letter. A couple of you took me up on the invite to come over and look at everything to begin with. Hopefully, you share that with the other three. You know, the 10-foot setback thing is going to just cause grief for a lot of people. It's not going to affect us. But more unnecessary worries and checks and money for folks to build a fence within a fence to keep their chickens from walking 10 feet within the property line. You know, it's not going to affect anything else. And I don't know, I mean, you know, you're going to concentrate the chickens in a smaller area instead of allowing them into a bigger area, which to me would just cause more problems, I think. So I also want to say, you know, we're here because there were several complaints. However, the animal shelter had come out and checked them all out, and none of them were justified. So here we are today with no justified complaints, taking action on something that really doesn't need any action taken on. The animal shelter advisory board was quite clear about what they wanted done, and the 10-foot setback was not part of what they wanted. And several people there voiced that opinion, and that was a unanimous decision by that board. So. Do you gentlemen have any questions for me?
Excuse me. What's the distance between your house and the fence? I've been out by there. The distance between your house and the fence to the...
You measure from the wall over? It's way more than 10 feet.
Okay, I wouldn't, I didn't go measure, but is it 15 or 20?
Yeah, it's way more than 10 feet.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think we do have someone zooming in with their hand raised.
Mr. Labs, if you want to go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mark Labes. Now, I was, realistically, you guys didn't really change anything from last time. There's no reason to have a setback anywhere 10-foot from your property lines. Your property, number one. Number two, as far as making 50-foot from any other building, that's kind of, I disagree with that. You don't need a chicken to change your chicken ordinance. There's no reason to have saying that you can't put chickens in the front yard, the side yard, the backyard, et cetera, because there's no justification for it. None. It's aesthetics is what people, and that doesn't affect anything. It really doesn't. Never has, not even property values. As far as health things, Mr. Davis, you brought up two weeks ago, oh, avian flu. And I have no idea why you even commented on that because that's not your forte. You're a doctor, but not a general practitioner. Doesn't do anything with avian flu. I just want to set the record straight on that because only about 1,000 cases of avian flu are here in the U.S. per year and generally are those that only handle chickens or wildlife. So that had no play into it. And if you're trying to use the safety thing, you might want to think again because my comments later on will illustrate that many of you don't care about safety. So that's what I have to say on this topic. Thank you.
Any other comments?
If I could, just, I don't believe the words avian flu ever came out of my lips. So I'm not exactly sure where he got that from.
Your hearing is a lot better than mine because I didn't hear it, period.
Any other comments?
My name is Beck Elliott. Sorry, can I leave this? I've been in Salina for my entire life, and I've had chickens for multiple years. And they're, for the most part, when kept correctly, a very cleanly animal. They keep themselves clean. They do not smell. They, as well as being on your own property, you know, you have a right to raise your own food. A lot of people use their chicken eggs to supplement their family's food source. And as far as personal allergies, you know, a personal allergy or being affected by the chickens, you know, if somebody's allergic to peanut butter, that doesn't mean I can't keep peanut butter in my house. And I just think that the zoning restrictions can affect multiple people here in Salina. A lot of people's coops are fixed or stationary, either whether they're posted or in the ground or whatnot. And so like the previous gentleman was stating, you'll have a lot of time or a lot of trouble getting those moved, as well as the more you can find the chickens, the more they are going to have trouble maintaining their cleanliness because they're going to be contained closer to their fecal matter. So the more you can free range them, get them spread out, the better off they're going to be, as well as, you know, your property is your property. If the chickens are ranging to the fence line, I don't see an issue with that. And there are multiple properties that are going to have issues with the zoning, like the corner lot that you had put up there. That yard doesn't even have the possibility to be 50 yards away from any other property is from what it looked like to me. So you're going to take away the possibility at all for anybody to keep chickens who lives in a property that's real small. My previous yard, I would not have been able to keep chickens because it's, there would have been nowhere to place a coop that was within, or that was 50 feet away from all of the other properties. But that is it. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, you said 50 yards, so it's going to, yeah, it is 50 feet. And question for staff, the 50 feet was already in our ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's not a change to the prior ordinance?
Well, actually, as a clarification, the prior language was more restrictive. It was 50 feet from a residence and any structure.
Right. And we added, it could be within 50 feet of your, yeah.
So outbuildings, sheds, things like that were, you had to be 50 feet away from those in the prior wording. This is a more, a less restrictive approach.
That was the other thing. So our ordinance has always had the 50 feet in it. Okay?
Yes.
Any other comments?
I'm Susan Glasscock. I'm a resident of this city.
Can I tip your mic down a little bit? That tall guy previously.
Thank you. I'm a resident of this city also, and I have a close friend that is having a problem with chickens being too close to her house and having an odor that comes into their house and their yard when she is out tending to her plants and everything in the yard. There's also, there's been submitted to the committee a doctor's letter about her ailments that's related to the feces. It's called dust spores that comes from the feces of the chickens. This is a well-known fact, if all of you remember living on a farm or anything, that a lot of children even weren't even allowed to clean out a chicken coop because they could become ill, a respiratory illness. On the internet, if you look on the internet, there's at least five different ailments that can be accompanied to this dust spore. Also, in relation to the corner lot, these corner lots, you need to specify in there not to have the chickens between the houses, like the next house over. If it's between the houses, that puts those chickens really close to that house, and that is the case in this instance. They're right behind their fence, right between the two houses. There's about 20 foot between the two houses. The corner house has got about, I don't know, 15 foot in their yard, and they've got about five or six foot there in their yard. It's enclosed in the fences. And all these chickens are remaining up there in that corner. That is their run. They call it a run. And their coop that they are supposed to have is made up of two porta potties that are located on the backside of the lot, next to the, close to the fence line. And there's no chickens that occupy that. They're all in this run up here. And at night, they're put in like a plastic enclosure, enclosed up, close to the run. It's not back there by their porta potty. Coop is what they say is a chicken coop. So it should be where the chickens have access to the coop, I would think. So anyway, there is a health issue and has been going on for almost two years. And I would really appreciate this if it come to a close. And I thank you for your attention and your consideration. Thank you.
One point of clarification, commissioners, the 50-foot requirement is still in effect for corner lots. So that would still be a requirement for the distance from any other dwelling.
And the 50-foot is for the actual coop, not for their, where they can be located?
That's correct. The 10-foot setback is for where they have the quote run of the yard. This would restrict them from within 10 feet of the parcel line if you adopt the proposed ordinance in front of you.
Any other comments? Further questions from commissioners?
I have a question, just a comment. I think other than settling the ultimate issue, which would be, do you have chickens in town or not? What we're trying to come up with is an amicable, compromised relationship. You know, most rules that are passed are not for the 95% of people who would obey them anyway. You know, in traffic, school, taxes, zoning, it's for the ones who are trying to find a way around it or innocently, you know, go beyond the bounds. And I think what we're trying to do here is not be too onerous, but give some consideration for those who don't necessarily like chickens. You know, odor and feathers, unless you put a forest field up or a 50-foot fence, I don't know how you block it. So we're short of getting to more to the basic question of are they in town or not? I think this is a pretty good adjustment to ordinance that most of us probably didn't even know we had, but it's a good place to work from.
Go ahead. Condon Hayes. I'd just like to discuss, this has been going on since September of 2022. When I first got chickens, which this is also the second time I've owned chickens in town at the same address with the same person complaining. But since this started, I got two chickens, and they're roaming a 1,200-square-foot yard. The first complaint came a week later, and the animal control supervisor came over and expected to see a total of 15 chickens with a just complete dirt hole and mud hole of a yard, which of course was not the case. Thereon, animal control probably came over another, oh, I would say 10 times and deemed no problem. Environmental services even came over. They did issue, you know, a couple codes, but they didn't have access to the yard to actually make a reputable code violation. When they did come over, they brought two of their supervisors over. Animal control brought two of their supervisors over. They managed the coop, which was 51 feet from the neighbor's house. And then they still deemed that there is no odor or anything else in the yard. You know, we do use the eggs. We also make trades with other people for eggs. And you know, the yard's had green grass in it since I ever put chickens in there. Of course, during the wintertime, you know, it does get a little dead, but comes spring and summertime, it'll grow again. I do disagree with the two Section 1 amendments to the code, but the other changes just to the wording in Section 2 and Section 3, I agree with. But it is, it's just been something that I feel with the main complaint being odor, and I've had probably more than 50 people in my backyard tell me that there hasn't been an odor. It's just something that just needs to just, like, I don't, I'm not sure what needs to go about it. But also, within that first month or two, there was a part made where the neighbor attempted to really try to, it felt like to improve the, if there's quote odor coming across by removing fence pickets on the bordering line. That was, of course, replaced, and I added a chain link fence with a screen on it, which helps block more dust as well. So I just hope you guys look into this pretty clearly and make a good decision on it. Thank you.
I'm Patty Greer. I have property in Saline County and also a place in town. I guess what I was wanting to know, what is, I tried to look back on the original ordinance and then what you're putting in place. What is the limit of number of chickens that you can actually have in town? He said something about two, and I don't know how many is in...
15 is the number that you can have.
Okay. But is that, I couldn't find that in your thing?
That is a number that's already been established, and so...
But is there documentation that that was established, that number in writing?
Yes, that's in the current code. 15 is the limitation on the number of chickens in the current code. The current code restricts you to a maximum of 15 chickens.
Okay, but that's what I was looking for, and I couldn't find that number, 15 chickens, is what I'm saying.
It's located elsewhere. This is modifying separate sections.
It's in Section 731B3. It's the line right above the yellow highlight.
731B3.
Yep.
Anyone else for, we bring this back for action?
I have a couple of questions for staff. When we discussed this earlier, I stated that one of my concerns is the, you know, obviously the health of the public. And I look to staff because I know we've had city staff out there, and we have monitoring systems that we can monitor for ammonia and those type of things. And could you give us a little background as to, I'll look whether it's Mr. Naseer or yourself, as to how those results came back?
I am aware of the fact that the fire department went out there and took a number of tests. I don't believe at that point in time they were able to get an actual ammonia reading. However, they were not able to detect anything else with their hardware. The hardware for ammonia detection was apparently in use or reserved for elsewhere. However, in this particular case, the individual property owner was provided with testing strips, for lack of a better term, to test for ammonia. I have not seen those, any results yet from that. We have sent staff out consistently to see if they smell anything. Staff has not been able to. The one exception would be right at the fence line. One firefighter said that they were able to smell something, but that was only right at the fence line. However, the other homeowner has indicated that they smell it repeatedly. It's just it hasn't been there when we've been there. And so there are others that have indicated that they have smelled an odor, but so far staff has not, with the exception of the one firefighter when they were out testing.
And I feel compelled to explain, we don't typically send firefighters to respond to chicken inquiries, but as it relates to trying to test, they had the testing equipment that was being used in that particular case.
And it's my understanding the health department had visited two inconclusive results.
Yeah, I, it's kind of secondhand information, but my understanding from the health department is they did an ammonia test. I'm not sure with what type of equipment. It did get an ammonia reading, but they equated it to a cat box or less. So an acceptable ammonia reading. And also no attribution to a source, just the test and the result.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, for one, would like to see the 10-foot buffer around the property removed from it. I think it's just more work to put on the homeowner to add more fencing inside of the house for what amounts to about three steps. And also, I agree, it does kind of concentrate the area that they can be in as well. I think it's just a kind of a burden, and it's just more to regulate. The rest of it I'd be fine with.
I agree.
I have mixed feelings on the 10-foot stipulation as well.
Well, it does decrease particulate, decreases the likelihood of particular matter. All it's doing is providing a buffer. I mean...
And I guess my, where I struggle is there's a lot more chickens in the community than we realize and from doing some research. And we really haven't had, this is the first time we've had any kind of complaint, and we haven't been able to really just, you know, to come up with there is a, an odor, there is a problem with the actual location where they're at. So that's what I'm struggling with, is to set some new rules for the community when we really haven't had significant, well, we really had no complaints that I'm aware of, except for this one.
And I have been concerned that other factors have not been looked at. That I go back to the, in the news recently, the mold issues out at Fort Hays State University, that there's a lot of factors that could contribute into health issues. So if there's no other discussion, we'll bring it back for action.
May I move approval of ordinance number 24-11198?
Okay, motion has been made to approve ordinance number 24-11198 with the lack of a sentence. Second?
I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 24-11198 excluding Item 4 from Section 7-31, Section 1.
One second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Okay, a motion and a second has been made to approve ordinance number 24-11198 excluding Item, Item 4.
Right.
Section 7.31, Item 4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0.
Didn't ask for the opposed.
Did you oppose?
Yep. Well, didn't ask for the nay. Okay.
All opposed.
One.
Motion carries 4-0.
I'm sorry, mayor, we do need a roll call.
Oh, that is an ordinance.
We're on the single reading format. It's, it's new, new territory.
It is. Madam clerk, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis.
Nay.
Commissioner Hopick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ivy.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbine.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
That's 4-1.
4-1. That's going to bring us to Item 6.4.
Item 6.4, authorize the mayor to execute a transferee agreement with Prairie Land Market, Inc.
Mr. Scott.
Mayor and commissioners, the item before you is what we refer to as a transferee agreement. And it, I've provided summary information as an attachment to the staff report, so I'd be happy to go into greater detail if you have questions or would like me to. But suffice it to say that we, the City of Salina entered into an agreement with master developers being Salina 2020 for the development of downtown through the use of star bonds, community improvement district, and community improvement districts and tax increment financing. And that master development agreement established the, the structure by which funds were allocated, segregated, and then what eligible uses were permitted. And that created rights as if the master developer was going to do all of the development, but recognizing that they would want on a project by project basis, want to assign those rights and provided for what we are referring to as transferee agreements. Transferring certain rights out of the master development agreement to a particular owner, operator, developer of a particular project. So in this, in this case, Prairie Land Market has worked with Salina 2020 and, and made application and comes to you with the recommendation of Salina 2020 for grant funding essentially from the downtown project, coming from existing, the existing retail CID fund. CID stands for Community Improvement District. The total project that they're proposing for the renovation of the storefront located at 118 South Santa Fe is $1,486,106. They've made application for in Salina 2020 as recommended allocation of $514,866 of existing retail CID funds. The agreement provides that those funds are made available on a pay-as-you-go basis, meaning the funds have to be generated through the, the CID district, collected on deposit with the City of Salina. And then there's also provision made for prioritization of approved transferee agreements or transferees, so that funds are distributed in the order that they were originally approved. In the case of existing retail CID's, this would be the first application and first approval. So they would be first in line as relates to those funds. And so the annual installment would be $41,948 for the remainder of the, the CID term. And accounting for interest over 18 annual installments, then the total distribution would be $755,055. As a fiscal note, as further detailed in that, in the summary document that I provided, there are multiple funds, the development agreement, there's also a supplemental agreement. And each transferee agreement provide for payments to approved projects on a pay-as-you-go basis, as I described, provided there are sufficient funds. The described pay-as-you-go provisions ensure that we, any future responsibility is limited to actual available funds segregated for the eligible purpose and takes into account the order of approval. And the, the approval of $514,866 for Prairie Land Market comes from that existing retail fund, which receives 18.9% of the downtown CID tax collections. On the second page of the staff report, there's a summary there of collections allocated to that fund to date are $219,915. The average annual distribution to the fund currently is $70,000 in comparison to this $41,948 annual installment. So the agreement that, that is attached is the transferee agreement between the city and Prairie Land Market for the purpose of authorizing allocation of CID existing retail funds and the amounts described. You could approve the agreement as presented. You could amend it, postpone it, or decline it. I do know there's representatives of the project here in attendance that can speak to the specifics of, of the project, the, the budget, timeline, those type of things. I do think there's one date clarification that we need to be sure to acknowledge. The, the transferee agreement cross-references the application as far as completion deadlines and the application refers to completion in July of 2023. So we do need to make sure to clarify when the intended completion date is. But other than that, I'd be happy to, I'd be yield the floor to representatives of the project as well as answering any questions you might have.
When is the project completion target?
I'm looking to representatives of the project to clarify that.
Hi, good evening. I'm Vicky Spicer. I'm the executive director for Prairie Land Market. The date that Mike referred to, that was just a typo, those are the dates for construction finished, should be June of 2024. And the occupancy begins July of 2024.
Thank you. We've been curious about the progress.
About the what?
The progress.
Well, as you've seen, when you go downtown, they've already begun doing the work. So the, the landowners have already begun doing the demolition and creating the white box that we will then go into and modify for what we need for the grocery store. So that hasn't happened yet, and that's kind of why this is so important for this project, because a big piece of that is to have our own commercial kitchen on site so that we make prepared foods made with local healthy ingredients every day. And we also turn that into a classroom space after hours. And a big part of our mission as a 501(c)(3) organization is to provide that educational piece as well as running the market and providing access for farmers to connect with the community.
So as I read through this, is this somewhat of a co-op where people join?
No, we were previously formed as a cooperative, but as of February of 2022, we are now 501(c)(3), so you do not need to be a member to join to shop there. And it hasn't actually functioned that way for quite some time. You can become a member by supporting us and donating funds, but it doesn't give you the right to shop there or not shop there, but we won't have that structure moving forward.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bridigan.
Mayor Longbine and commissioners, I'm Larry Bridigan with Equity Bank and I'm here with Trace Walker from Blue Beacon. We represent Salina 2020 and it's hard to believe, but we had our first meeting on the downtown project 10 years ago, this coming August. And I think Commissioner Davis was on that commission at that time and, and you've all continued to be very supportive of that process. Downtown continued, continued to thrive and we think this is a, a very worthwhile project that can, can really take it to another level. Along with that, SDI has a, a plan to have a new farmer's market downtown this summer. And obviously Prairie Land Market will play into that extremely well. If you look at the, you look at the numbers for downtown, initially when we did the Star Bond project, which was about 18,250,000, I believe, we were not going to pay down any principal until 2030. And to date, I believe we paid down about $3 million in principal. Our sales tax revenue continues to grow every year. I think last year was about a 3% growth. And the, the sales tax revenue is really the fuel for the engine downtown. So every, every project we do, Salina 2020 is very sensitive about generating sales tax revenue. And I think to date, those, that, that has really proved to be the right path and continues to perform downtown. So from Salina 2020 standpoint, we highly recommend that you approve this incentive package and I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Yes, sir.
I think I know the answer, but someone didn't ask me, because it is now a 501(c)(3), is sales tax charged on the?
Yes.
That's what I told them. I said, well, no better authority to ask than you. Okay.
There's nonprofits that don't, but this particular one, because they do have a nonprofit status, they will, they will charge sales tax just like any other business downtown. So that's a, that's an important part of this.
Variations in sales tax on food at the state level would apply.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
In case somebody asks, you've paid down 3,255,000, so that way you have the exact amount, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Hopick.
I always like to be able to fill in those numbers for you, Mr. Bridigan. Yeah, I, again, this is a pay-as-you-go, it's paid for by the sales taxes collected within the district. I think it's, again, another step in the right direction. Downtown continues to flourish and, and I'm excited to, to see this open. I do have one question. Will there be a rear entrance into this off of the back parking lot into the farmer's market? Or will it all be off of Santa Fe?
There will, sorry, there will be access to it from the rear, but it's, there will be a side door as well as the front door that's currently 118 South Santa Fe.
So there'll be a side door over there by the, the plaza where we're going to show, where we're going to talk about.
Right, where that big arching, that big half moon spaces, there will be a door on the west side of that so that, that you can access it there.
Perfect.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker.
Trace Walker with Salina 2020. I wanted to just clarify one thing that sometimes gets lost in the conversation because we use the term, it's being paid for by the sales tax. But I think it's important to remember, it's been, being paid by the incremental increase in the sales tax. So for all of the Salina taxpayers that are watching this afternoon and this evening, I think that's important to remember. This is being paid for by the revitalization of downtown and the extra sales taxes being generated. I just think that's an important note.
Take away from our normal sales tax.
That is a good point. And one other clarification, because of the star bond designation, we're able to capture the incremental growth in the state sales tax and apply that as well.
Well, I'm glad it's, it's all being successful and I was interested to learn here the history of the building, where I used to go see movies at the Strand Theater. I always wondered where that was. Because I, I got a, like Larry, I got a place, what was, what was where, when? So yeah, it's, it's good that we're, we're filling up buildings downtown and everything's looking, looking up. So. Any further comment from commissioners? Any public comment? See none, I'll bring it back for action.
Mayor Longbine, I move that we authorize the mayor to execute the attached transferee agreement with Prairie Land Market, Inc. as proposed.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second, authorize the mayor to execute the attached transfer agreement with Prairie Land Market Incorporated as proposed. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries 5-0. And that's going to bring Item 7.4 up to the top as amended.
All right. Item 7.4 is now Item 6.5, and that is to authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with Grassroots Efforts LLC to allow the installation of metal canopies that would extend over a public plaza and the Santa Fe Avenue right of way on the rear, south side and front of the Prairie Land Market building at 118 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Mr. Andrew.
So I have a number of items, I'm going to part myself here. You switched up on me, but I've got this report ready and it's Item 7.4. And this is in a request for a license agreement with Grassroots Efforts LLC, which is the owner of the Prairie Land Market building. And the purpose of the license agreement is to allow the installation of metal canopies that would extend over a public plaza and the Santa Fe Avenue right of way on the rear, south and front of the Prairie Land Market building. And so if you visualize the area, the, the portion that's running east and west in the Strand Plaza, that was the entrance into the movie theater. And then the area that's at the rear, that is Strand Plaza, was the auditorium for the movie theater. And that was removed as part of the renovation project downtown. And so the, the storefront that we're talking about here was reduced from 100 feet to 64 feet to make space for the Bolo Grill. And so the Prairie Land Market is relocating into that space adjacent to the Strand Plaza from their current location at 305 Walnut. And they proposed a number of modifications to the building and those went before the downtown design review board in October. And the downtown design review board approved a certificate of compatibility for a number of exterior changes. That's going to result in a very attractive building at that location. When that was reviewed, it was identified that there were a number of metal canopies that were extending out over public right of way or public space. And so this application requests that the city commission authorize those canopies to project out over public space and the public sidewalk on Santa Fe. So on the west facade of the building, there's two that you can't, that's the east facade, but on the back side where the plaza is, there's two doors that would face Strand Plaza on the west. And the architect for the project is proposing to install five-foot by, five-foot canopies over those two west entryways. And those would extend out about five feet into the plaza. There's also two bay windows that encroach into the plaza and those would remain in place. On the south side, it's currently a solid blank wall and the project architect's proposing to create a new south-facing door that would have a concrete stoop and a five-foot by 10-foot long aluminum canopy that would extend into Strand Plaza from the south facade of the building. This encroachment's about five feet. We looked carefully at the plans because there is a concrete bench that's located within the plaza, but this entry door is far enough east that the door swing and the path of travel will not be affected by that concrete bench. And then on the east side, that you can see in the color rendering there, they have a 40-foot, 44-foot long aluminum canopy that would be attached to the front facade. This would extend out 4.4 inches into the right of way and the canopy would have a nine-foot clearance from the sidewalk. We've contacted all of our local public and franchise utilities. None of them viewed this as being impacted. These are not surface improvements. These are going into the airspace, so it's not affecting any utilities. And the options we've identified for you this evening would be to approve a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with Grassroots Efforts LLC to allow those canopies to extend into adjoining Strand Plaza and over a public sidewalk at the front of the building. You could postpone consideration of the license agreement application to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding any further information you would like. Or you could decline to approve the proposed license agreement resulting in the applicant not being able to construct the canopies as proposed. Staff recommends option one. With that, I'd be open to any questions that commissioners might have.
Questions? Is there any comments from the developer? I see none. Is there any public comment? I will bring this back for action.
I will bring this back for action.
Mayor moved to authorize you to execute a license agreement with Grassroots Efforts LLC to allow the installation of metal canopies that would extend over a public plaza and the Santa Fe Avenue right-of-way on the rear, south side, and front of the Prairie Land Market Building at 118 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Second?
Motion is second, authorize mayor to execute a license agreement with Grassroots Efforts LLC to allow the installation of metal canopies that would extend over a public plaza and the Santa Fe Avenue right-of-way on the rear, south side, and front of the Prairie Land Market Building at 118 South Santa Fe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. That'll bring us to developmental business, item 7.1.
Item 7.1 is Business with 1858 Properties LLC. The first part is item 7.1A, authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with 1858 Properties LLC to allow the construction and maintenance of off-street parking stalls in the Mulberry Street right-of-way at the southwest corner of South Santa Fe Avenue and Mulberry Street. And then item 7.1B will be to approve ordinance number 24-11196, changing the zoning district classification from C3 district and R3 district to C4 district. The property that's the subject of this application is legally described as lots 170 and 172 on Santa Fe Avenue and lot 169 in the north 10 feet of lot 171 on 7th Street, plus abutting vacated alley, all in the original town, now City of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Item 7.1A is also an application for a license agreement, and this is a license agreement to allow the construction and maintenance of off-street parking stalls in the Mulberry Street right-of-way at the southwest corner of Santa Fe and Mulberry. And as we just discussed, the public interest is sometimes served by allowing a private use of existing right-of-way as long as that use doesn't interfere with or compromise safety in the public use of the right-of-way. And historically, a license agreement is a mechanism by which a governing body can authorize the private use of the right-of-way under certain specified terms and conditions. So we're looking at a building and property that's at the southwest corner of Mulberry and South Santa Fe. And there's a companion application to rezone this property, but this particular application is seeking approval of a license agreement that would authorize five angled parking stalls located north of a proposed outdoor patio to extend into or be constructed in the public right-of-way along the south side of Mulberry. And so as a general rule, only publicly owned or maintained improvements or public or franchise utilities can be placed in the right-of-way. The exception is that privately owned and maintained improvements can be placed in the right-of-way under the terms of a license agreement authorized by this body. And so on the plan, you see on the screen, shows the existing building. And then to the north of that, this area right here is a proposed outdoor patio or dining area north of that existing building. And that's 50 feet wide and 15 feet deep. And so if you build that, the remaining area north of the patio area is not wide enough to accommodate both a driving aisle and angled parking stalls. So as proposed on the attached site plan exhibit, the parking stalls would encroach about five feet into the Mulberry Street right-of-way. This would necessitate relocation of the public sidewalk on the south side of Mulberry. And so that abutting right-of-way is 16 feet wide with a five-foot encroachment and a five-foot wide sidewalk. There'd be approximately six feet remaining between the sidewalk and the Mulberry Street curb line. So as we look at this site and the plating of the site, the right-of-way width for Santa Fe is 100 feet, the right-of-way width for Mulberry Street and 7th Street's 80 feet. Mulberry Street itself is 48 feet wide, and there's 16 feet between the curb line and the right-of-way line on the south. And so the approval of this request would result in having to relocate the existing public sidewalk. But there would be 10 feet of unencumbered right-of-way to allow removal and relocation of the sidewalk. And so under the terms of the proposed agreement, 1858 Properties would be responsible for the cost of removal and replacement of the public sidewalk. As you look at the site plan, there's no proposed separation between the parking stalls and the relocated sidewalk. And so the choices would be to put parking blocks in those stalls along here to keep vehicle overhang from going into the sidewalk. And the alternative, the sidewalk could be shifted farther north, but staff feels there still needs to be some kind of protection for the sidewalk from overhanging vehicles. So only a portion, not the entire parking stall, would be located in the right-of-way, and they wouldn't be accessed from the right-of-way but from private properties. So they'd be considered off-street and not on-street spaces. So under the, even though they'd be located in, partially in the right-of-way, the property owner would be responsible for painting, maintenance, and snow removal, and for monitoring compliance as far as any parking restrictions that are there. And so your alternatives this afternoon would be to approve a motion authorizing the mayor to sign and execute a license agreement with 1858 Properties to allow the construction of parking stalls in the Mulberry Street right-of-way with or without any conditions. The commission could postpone consideration of 18 Property LLC's request to a future meeting date if you feel like you need additional information to reach a decision. Or you could decline to approve the proposed agreement and provide further direction to the applicant and staff. Did want to point out one thing, and I may request some help from Mr. Bankston. I noted after I reread this a couple times that I said under the, in the report, that under the terms of the proposed license agreement, 1858 Properties would be responsible for the cost of removal and replacement of the public sidewalk. But I did not incorporate that language into the agreement itself. So on page one, section one, there's a section that grants a license to 1858 Properties to install and maintain the parking improvements within the right-of-way as shown on the site plan. And my suggestion would be that the agreement be amended to add two conditions under subsection A. One would be that the licensee shall be responsible for the cost of removal and replacement of the abutting, the side, public sidewalk abutting Mulberry Street. And then a second condition, that the licensee shall be responsible for placing parking blocks in the stalls to prevent vehicles from overhanging the public sidewalk. And so I was going to see if Mr. Bankston agreed that under 1A, putting two conditions under there, conditioning the grant of the license to those conditions, if that would be the appropriate place to make those amendments.
That would seem to be appropriate, yes.
Questions for Mr. Andrew? Would the applicant have any comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Jeff Mays, Compro Realty, 157 South 7th. I'm here on behalf of 1858 Properties this afternoon. I'll be brief. This, this application, it is a companion agreement. Earlier, we're going to hear just the zoning piece, but we wanted them both to go hand in hand because they tie relative to this project. If you look at the building on, by itself, without the license agreement and the ability to be flexible with the parking lot, we've got a real tough redevelopment project there. So that's why we wanted you to hear both the license agreement and the zoning question at the same time. So we delayed it to today. If you look at the, if you look at the floor plan, there's an awful lot of detail there. We're working very diligently with an existing user to go into that space. They had indicated, yeah, if we can build that, then let's go do it. And we're like, well, no, we've got some things that we need to get sorted out, and that's why we're here before you today. I won't belabor any other comments relative to the zoning unless called upon, but I just wanted to stand for any questions at this time.
Questions for Mr. Mays?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public?
What about safety issues? We're getting all this traffic and stuff, congestion downtown. How about ambulances getting access because you're going to have so much congestion? Law enforcement access? The fire trucks access? I've seen the fire trucks, they have to zig and zag going down that center line. This congestion issue, it's even a problem in New Alphina, Missouri. I've been there. It's so congested, they can't get their vehicles down there. So you might have a safety issue, fire or law enforcement.
I guess I would just respond by pointing out again that the, the paving width for Mulberry Street is 48 feet, which is a fairly wide street by city standards. And none of this activity is going to extend into the street right-of-way itself. All the, the encroachment will be in the right-of-way area, but will not affect the path of travel on Mulberry Street itself.
Any other comments? Right back to the commission for action.
Okay, I'll take a shot at this. Mayor Longbine, I move that we authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with 1858 Properties LLC to allow the construction of parking stalls in the Mulberry Street right-of-way with adding two conditions. One, that the licensee is responsible for the removal and replacement of public sidewalk adjacent to Mulberry Street. And two, that the licensee is responsible for placing parking blocks in stalls adjacent to the sidewalk.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with 1858 Properties LLC to allow the construction of parking stalls in the Mulberry Street right-of-way with the following conditions of parking, and that the applicant will be responsible for sidewalks, approachment, and install parking blocks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And that will bring 7.1B.
Companion item 7.1B is an application that was filed by the property owner, 1858 Properties LLC. And their request is to change the zoning district classification from the east property from C3 to C4, and for the west property from R3 to C4. And so the, the existing Santa Fe portion of the property, there's two 50-by-120-foot lots, and there's an existing building there that occupies the entire south lot. And so the building contains 6,000 square feet. And there's also a vacant lot to the west at southeast corner of 7th and Mulberry. It's zoned R3 multifamily, and it had an apartment building on the site, which is why it was zoned R3. That apartment building was torn down in 1968, and that property's been vacant since that time. In February of last year, the city commission approved a vacation petition that vacated the alley right-of-way that separated these two properties, subject to the reservation of a utility easement for a 12-inch sanitary sewer line that runs through this strip. But the vacation of that alley allowed the property owner to tie the ownership of these two properties together without a gap. So the reasoning for rezoning this to C4 is, one, it would allow the west lot, which is zoned R3, to be used for surface parking. Two, it would make the zoning of this property consistent with the applicant's other land holdings on the east side of Santa Fe. And then third, the C4 district does not require that businesses provide a prescribed amount of off-street parking. So by zoning this property C4, the proposed restaurant operation would be able to take advantage of the shared parking arrangements that currently exist in this area and would not have to provide all their own parking on-site. So I think you can see from the maps that are in the packet that this is adjacent to property that's zoned C4 already to the east and to the north. And so it's, it's part of the Salina Downtown Business Improvement District and is shown as part of the downtown on a number of plans. And so the planning commission looked at this request at their February 6th meeting and voted six to zero to recommend approval of rezoning these two east tract and west tract to a unified C4 zoning. And they found that due to change in conditions in the area, the vacant lot at 7th and Mulberry is more suitable for commercial use than residential use. They found that the zoning being requested be, would consistent with the existing zoning pattern in the area, and that this property is located in the Business Improvement District where there's abundant C4 zoning, and that allowing this to be redeveloped as a restaurant site would encourage the, the goal of having a park-wants destination downtown. So your options this afternoon would be to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission, approve the attached ordinance, rezoning this property from C3 and R3 to C4 Central Business District. You could postpone consideration of this item to a future meeting date to allow staff or the applicant to provide you with additional information to assist you in your decision-making. If you disagree with the planning commission's recommendation, you could return it back to the planning commission with three affirmative votes. Or you could deny the request outright and decline to approve the attached ordinance that would require four affirmative votes. So this comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the planning commission, and the attached ordinance reflects their recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
Nope.
Would the applicant have anything to add? Any public comment? I will bring this back to the commission for action.
Mayor Davis, I move that we concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance.
Mayor Longbine?
What did I say, Davis?
And it's only quarter 20 till 6:00. Sorry about that, Mayor Longbine.
Let's try that again. Mayor Longbine, I move that the city commission concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance number 24-11196, rezoning this property from C3 and R3 to C4.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve ordinance number 24-11196, rezoning this property from C3 to R3 to C, and R3 to C4. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. That will bring us to item 7.2.
Item 7.2 deals with the Windy Creek addition. Item 7.2A is to approve ordinance number 24-11199, amending the future land use map of the Salina, Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of a 55.94 acre tract of land located on the west side of I-135 north of Waterwell Road from future employment to future commercial area in support of highway-oriented commercial development. Item 7.2B is to approve ordinance number 24-11200, annexing a 92.81 acre tract of land located on the west side of I-135 north of Waterwell Road into the city limits. And item 7.2C, consider application number Z24-1 filed by Southlands Development LLC requesting a change in zoning district classification from Saline County Ag to C7 to allow development of highway-oriented commercial businesses. The rezoning request area is a 9.47 acre tract The rezoning request area is a 9.47 acre tract of land located on the west side of I-135 north of Waterwell Road.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As the city clerk just read out, these applications focus on a piece of property that's located at the northwest quadrant of the Waterwell-I-135 interchange. And the property extends all the way north to the Cedar Creek addition and the existing city limit line. And so in the 2010, when the Comprehensive Plan was being developed, this property was designated as future employment or future industrial area due to the airport industrial area to the west along Centennial Road. And there was a belief that the industrial development was likely to continue to expand eastward along Waterwell Road towards the interstate. So the entire area was shown as future employment area. And one of the selling points for the Waterwell Road interchange, which was funded as a KDOT project, was that due to the Walmart and some of the commercial congestion around Schilling Road, that Waterwell Road was a preferable route for larger trucks to enter the airport industrial area, particularly the Schwann's operation there. So the interchange was funded on the basis that that was a better route for trucks to get in and out of the airport industrial area. And so that was kind of envisioned as potentially an industrial corridor. We also have a commercial land use category that we have in place along South 9th Street and North 9th Street near I-70, and that's designed to accommodate commercial uses that serve either local motorists or travelers passing through the Salina area. And so the current land use designation anticipates that industrial development will continue to expand to the east, all the way to the interstate. The applicant, or the owner of the property, indicates that instead of industrial development, they're proposing to develop the south 55.94 acres of this tract with commercial uses. And the first development they're proposing is a convenience store operation on a 9.47 acre tract located at the very corner next to the interchange. And they've submitted this application for changing the future land use map from employment to commercial to better align with their companion application for commercial zoning, and to reflect their belief that due to the proximity of the property to the interchange, this property's better suited for commercial than industrial development. And so some of the findings that the planning commission looked at and made is that, first, there is interest from interstate-oriented commercial businesses in developing land at the northwest corner. It would help provide development opportunities for interstate-oriented businesses, and there are limited interchange sites available. The employment land use classification does not encourage or list highway commercial uses, but the commercial land use category does. The southern portion of the tract does have access to existing public utilities and the Yost addition, and it's suitable for highway commercial businesses. This would allow, this change would allow development of a highway-oriented convenience store at the northwest corner. So your role in looking at this property is to decide what your vision is for the future development of the northwest corner of this interchange. Do you envision it as industrial development? Or do you agree with the property owner that commercial development in proximity to the interchange is the preferred vision? The planning commission looked at this question on February 20th at their meeting and voted unanimously to recommend that the land use map be amended to show the southern portion of this tract as future commercial, but retain the employment land use designation on the north 38 acres west of Dry Creek. So, or excuse me, east of Dry Creek. And so if you were to concur with their findings and recommendations, then you could approve the attached ordinance 24-1199, which amends the future land use designation for the south 55.94 acres from employment to commercial. You could refer this application back to the planning commission for reconsideration if you disagree with their assessment. Or you could overturn their recommendation and decide that the future land use designation should remain in place and make a motion that ordinance 24-1199 not be approved. So if you were to take that position, then the existing employment area designation would remain in place for that whole area north of Waterwell Road, west of I-135. So with that, I'd be open to any questions about the city's future land use map.
Questions for Mr. Andrew? I just have a comment. You know, I thought this year would be kind of a year to catch up and slow down, but it doesn't look like that's happening, does it?
Doesn't look that way to me.
The applicant have any comments?
Excuse me. Gary Hobbie, Salina. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for hearing our request to modify the future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan. Back in 2010, when we did complete the Comprehensive Plan, there was a lot of questions about the outlying area around our community and what was going to happen with them. And this was pretty much left at that position. But today, we've had an opportunity to work with another commercial business coming to our community. We feel like the access off of Interstate 70 and Waterwell Road would be advantageous for highway commercial services that we've had the opportunity to look at. And we have one that will be coming pretty quickly, as far as we're concerned, but we see that there's other opportunities that they may bring along with them to work with other commercial businesses. So we'd appreciate your affirmative vote, and we'll stand for any questions. We do have one of the owners of Southlands Development here with us if you have any future questions of them.
Questions for Mr. Hobbie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Now we'll bring it back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 24-11199, amending the future land use map of the city of Salina, Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of a 55.94 acre tract of land located on the west side of I-135 north of Waterwell Road from future employment to future commercial area in support of highway-oriented commercial development.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 24-11199, amending the future land use of Salina, Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of a 55.94 acre tract of land located on the west side of I-135 north of Waterwell Road from future employment to future commercial area in support of highway-oriented commercial development. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And that will bring us to item 7.2B.
7.2B is an application also filed by Southlands Development LLC, and they're requesting annexation of this entire 92.81 acre tract. Again, it's located along the west side of I-135 north of Waterwell Road. And so this property is currently located in unincorporated Celine County. It's zoned agricultural, used for agricultural purposes historically. The applicant has filed an application requesting annexation of the property, which is contiguous with the existing city limits in order to obtain full municipal services for a proposed convenience store, travel plaza, and future commercial and industrial uses. So this property is bordered by the Cedar Creek Manufacture Home Park on the north, the interstate on the east, Waterwell Road, and the Yost addition, which is part of the city on the south, and then there's farmland west of West Dry Creek. So this does touch the city limits on the north and east. And if you look at the interchange area itself, it was annexed into the city in 2002 along with the Yost addition that's at the southwest corner of that interchange. So anytime we look at annexation, we're also looking at roadways. And the eastern portion of Waterwell Road adjacent to this tract is already inside the city limits because it was part of the interchange project, but the western portion is county-owned and maintained. So we have expanded the annexation area so that we didn't have a gap in Waterwell Road between the north portion and the south portion. And so the actual annexation area in the ordinance is around 97 acres because it includes a budding Waterwell Road. This is a voluntary annexation to property that's contiguous to the existing city limits, so there's no special public hearing requirements or referral to the county commission. It's something that the city commission can address at today's meeting. The, if we look at the street improvements or what we have there, which will be addressed more in detail in the platting, but the pavement of Waterwell Road is in good condition as to pavement width and thickness, but there, again, there's no curb and gutter, and it lacks public sidewalks. And so the Southlands Development has indicated that they're interested in entering into a development agreement that will address those things, similar to the agreements that you had on your consent agenda earlier today. And if we look at the costs and benefits of annexation, potential cost to the city is additional maintenance associated with a new public street and public utility lines extended into the annexation area. The benefits to the city would include collection of additional property tax, sales tax, and franchise taxes. So the planning commission recommended that the applicant's petition for voluntary annexation be approved, and that this 92.81 acre site be annexed into the corporate limits of the city to allow connection to the city's utility systems. And so attached to this item is ordinance 24-11200. And so you could approve that ordinance, annexing this 92.81 acre tract and the abutting Waterwell Road roadway. This would allow development on the site to connect to public utilities and bring this under the city's jurisdiction. You could postpone action this evening and request that this item go to a future meeting date where we could provide additional information to you about this request, or you could decline to approve ordinance 24-11200, and that would leave this property outside the city limits. So with that, I'd be happy to address any questions about the proposed annexation.
Questions for Mr. Andrew? It sounds like the city's growing. The applicant like to comment?
Thank you, Gary Hobbie. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for looking at our new annexation project that we're looking forward to working with the city staff in the future to develop a new project in the area. This is phase one, which we'll be looking at our next system, next issue that you have for you. We'll be looking at phase one of the project, and we're pretty sure that we're going to have phase two or maybe phase three coming along the latter part of the year and with some additional commercial areas in this thing. So we'd really like for you to give us an affirmative vote on the annexation of nearly 93 acres for our tract of land, as well as the nearly seven acres for the addition of Waterwell Road to this project area. Again, we have a developer, owner of the development group is here. If you have any other further questions, we would go ahead and stand for them. If not, we'd appreciate your vote.
Questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment? I'll bring her back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 24-11200, annexing this 92.81 acre tract into the city. This would allow development of the site to connect to public utilities and bring the site under the administrative, regulatory, and law enforcement jurisdiction of the city, and would ensure the emergency response to the site is provided by the Salina Police and Fire Departments during construction.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 24-11200, annexing this 92.81 acre tract into the city and with the addition of the Waterwell Road portion. This would allow development on the site to connect to public utilities and bring this site under the administrative, regulatory, and law enforcement jurisdiction of the city, and would ensure that emergency response to the site is provided by the Salina Police Department and Fire Departments during construction. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion carries, ordinance carries five zero. And that brings us to item 7.2C.
Hope you're all keeping track of all these different acreages, because staff has struggled sometimes to keep each request as a different acreage, and we've tried to keep them all straight. But the annexation area that you just approved is 92.81 acres plus the abutting Waterwell Road. The rezoning request is just for a 9.47 acre tract of land that's closest to the interchange. And so the property that's subject to the zoning request is undeveloped and outside the city limits and currently zoned and used for agricultural purposes, just as the entire tract is. Southlands Development is proposing to rezone only 9.47 acres in the southeast corner of the property to C7 at this time, that C7 being a highway commercial designation. The remainder of the annexed property will remain zoned agricultural pending other development proposals coming forward. So the focus of this is just the lot in the very southeast corner. We have provided you with an overview of the C7 Highway Commercial District. It was created as a separate district to try to permit development of commercial uses that are associated with our interchange areas and along other major limited-access highways, and it's designed to try to encourage food, lodging, motor vehicle service, and fuel providers to cluster at interchange locations to serve the traveling public. So the C7 district is designed for the type of use that's being proposed here. The tract that's subject to rezoning itself has 570 feet of frontage on Waterwell Road and 640 feet of frontage on the interstate. As proposed, it would be served by a new north-south street that would be named Marcella Drive, because the long-term plan would be for Marcella Drive and Cedar Creek to extend south through this property and eventually tie into Waterwell Road. And so historically, our interstate interchanges have been viewed as valuable, finite resources for the community, and a majority of those interstate locations have been set aside for highway travel-oriented commercial development. And so this appears to be suitable site for that type of zoning. And for reasons that we'll get into in more detail, while we agree that C7 zoning is the most suitable zoning classification, we feel as a staff that planned highway commercial would be more appropriate in this particular case. And so if you look at the surrounding zoning map, and particularly the property across the street to the south, the property in the Yost addition to the south is zoned Plan C7. And we believe that because of that, the C7 is appropriate for this. And we believe that because of that, the C7 is appropriate for this side of Waterwell Road as well. You have just amended the future land use map, which would support a commercial designation for this property. And so as we pointed out, our C7 zoning district is designed to permit the development of commercial uses associated with interchange areas. We've used C7 zoning around major interstate interchanges in order to preserve land for highway oriented businesses like convenience stores, restaurants, and hotels. And so going to C7 would be in line with those practices. But we wanted to point out a couple of things for you and the applicant's benefit is that planned commercial zoning allows the commission to place conditions on their zoning approval while straight commercial does not. And so historically, the commission has used planned commercial zoning if there are things in the nature of travel or transportation improvements that might need to be tied to a rezoning request. So for example, the Walmart site is a planned commercial district, and the planned commercial district required Walmart to pay for a traffic signal and to dedicate turn lanes. In the case of the Target and Sam's Club, that was a planned commercial district and resulted in Schilling Road being reconstructed at no cost to the city. In the case of the Lowe's Development, the Lowe's Development paid for turn lanes and a portion of a traffic signal, and those were conditions of approval in a planned commercial district. And then the Menards Project was also a planned commercial district. The other side of the coin is that a planned commercial district allows a, when you have a specific development plan, that the developers can request a modification from standard limitations. So for example, the Hilton Garden Inn, the maximum building height in that zoning district is 50 feet, but as a planned district, that was allowed to be a 62-foot building. And then in the Menards case, they have a nearly 70-foot tall sign that was approved by the city commission as part of their planned district. And so as staff has looked at the preliminary review of the convenience store site plan, it appears to us that it contains elements that are best addressed through the creation of a planned commercial district. And so whether this is straight commercial or planned commercial is a discretionary decision for the city commission. The planning commission has recommended that the application be converted to Plan C7, and they gave three reasons for that. One is that all the corners of the Waterwell Road, I-135 interchange are planned commercial districts, three of the four, and this would be the fourth if that was done consistently. In this case, the concurrent review of a site plan is a relevant consideration in determining whether C7 Highway Commercial is the most appropriate zoning classification. And then the other thing is there's been a traffic study done for this property, and staff believes that a planned commercial district is the best tool for addressing street improvements or turning lanes and things of that nature that would result from the site plan review. And so again, the planned commercial zoning may be required by you if you find that that zoning is needed to ensure compatible land use relationships with surrounding development. So if you were to concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and have this converted to a request for planned commercial zoning, how we would envision that working is that on Wednesday, staff is going to work, meet with representatives of the Maverick Convenience Store chain to go over their site plan. If you were to recommend or concur with the recommendation of the planning commission for Plan C7 zoning, then we would marry up Maverick's site plan with a revised Plan C7 zoning request. That request and the site plan would be considered together by the planning commission. They would recommend to you any special conditions or modifications to the C7 district, and then the zoning request for Plan C7, the site plan, and hopefully the final plat would come back to you for one review altogether. And so the advantage of this is, under this scenario, Maverick Convenience Stores would not only know that they had the correct zoning, but they would have an approved site plan through the zoning process, and that would facilitate them obtaining a building permit once public infrastructure is in place. So that's the scenario if you were to concur with the planning commission's recommendation. With that being said, your options this evening would be to concur with the findings and recommendations of the planning commission and direct the applicant to amend their application to Plan C7. This would require that they amend their application. We would marry it up with the Maverick Convenience Store Site Development Plan for concurrent review. You could refer, that would require three affirmative votes. You could refer this application back to the planning commission for reconsideration if you disagree with their recommendation. You could overturn their recommendation and direct staff to prepare an ordinance changing the zoning classification of the property to C7 Highway Commercial. That could be done with four affirmative votes at this meeting. Or you could overturn the recommendation of the planning commission and decide that the agricultural zoning that's in place should remain in place and make a motion that a change in zoning classification of the property not be approved. That would also require four votes from commissioners. So with that, that concludes staff's report. And so one of the concerns is timing and time factor, and we believe that given the fact that we're meeting with representatives of Maverick on Wednesday, and we've already identified some things that might best fit with a planned commercial district, that we can get the site plan process and the zoning process married together and bring both back to you in a timely fashion.
Questions for Mr. Andrew? Looking at the motion, when we approve the Plan C7, do we also need to put in there that they have the one and two options there?
Well, that's to explain, if you were to concur with that, that's the only option that we need. That the other parts is that's already written into the ordinance, that they would amend their application and submit. I think because of where we are, we have a known user and we have a site plan, that it's, option two is if we didn't have a user and we didn't have a site plan, that would allow for a deferred site development plan. But what our plan would be, would be to have the zoning application and the site development plan come back to you so you could consider the two together at one time.
It was just some, excuse me, when I was reading that, it was just somewhat confusing as to whether that need to be a part of the motion, so thank you.
Maybe we, maybe I'd like to hear a little bit more about why the planned is better than just the standard C7, because it seems like it would expedite things a little bit if we just went.
Can you explain that?
However, you guys want to do it.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jake Bradley with Southlands Development. Really, the concern we had early on, we want to go C7. Doing PC7, I thought it was going to just drag the process out. The city's got more reviews, they have to okay more things, and we really wanted to expedite this process. So that was the initial thought behind C7, not PC7. Dean had sent an email this Saturday explaining in detail exactly how he could marry the two up. So at this point in time, we're okay with the PC7. It's all about timing, so if we can expedite this, I have no problem with the PC7 going forward. So if you have any questions for me, I can certainly answer them.
Questions?
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any comments from the public? Bring her back for action.
Mayor, I would move that we concur with the finding and recommendation.
I'm sorry, we already closed comments. A motion was being made.
He was on his way up.
Take your seat, please.
I thought you had just.
No, comments were closed.
Oh, okay. He was on his, I don't know if you could see him, but he was coming up from the, you're running the meeting.
No, we were in the middle of a motion.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ivey.
Mayor, I move that we concur with the finding and recommendations of the planning commission and direct the applicant to amend this application to Plan C7.
Second?
Motion is second. It's been made to concur with the planning commission and direct the applicant to amend the application to Plan C7. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zero. Where are we at, Mr. Andrew? 7.3?
I believe we've already done 7.4, so that leaves us with 7.3. And this is a consideration of the acceptance of the offered street right-of-way utility and drainage easement and restricted access dedications to serve the proposed Markley addition. And this is a two-lot subdivision of a 6.13 acre tract of unplatted land that's located at the north end of the Berkeley Family Recreation Area, and the purpose of the plat is to create a building lot for a proposed new fire station facility to be located in this location. And we summarized for you that the planning commission earlier in 2023 considered a preliminary plat application, which they approved, and we just kind of summarized for you there that some of the conditions and information that the planning commission was wanting to be addressed had been addressed by Cow Valley Engineering on the final plat and carried over. So this request has been submitted by Salina Fire Department Fire Chief Tony Schneider, Jr., and it's an application submitted on behalf of the city of Salina as the landowner. And the request is to create a final plat that would have one lot set aside for a new fire station facility and a second lot intended to serve as a stormwater retention and detention area. And the balance of the acreage would be dedicated as public right-of-way for Crawford Street and Markley Road. And so this property has 664 feet of frontage on Crawford Street and 350 feet of frontage along Markley, and there's an existing driveway opening on Markley Road that will provide access to the rear parking area for the fire department personnel, and then a new driveway opening on Crawford that will allow fire apparatus to exit the station onto Crawford. There's no internal public streets being proposed. We've discussed somewhat the status of the two perimeter streets, Markley Road and East Crawford. Portions of East Crawford meet city standards, portions of it do not. And so in lieu of just going right to a development agreement, the city commission held a steady session in January, and at that steady session, you discussed several different Crawford Street improvement options that would be associated with this subdivision. And at the conclusion of that steady session, you directed staff to pursue the improvements identified in option number six. And that included widening all of Crawford Street, abutting this so that all portions met the minimum width standard of 24 feet. There are some portions at the east end that are not quite 24 feet wide. You included the installation of curb and gutter on both sides of adjacent Crawford Street, supported the installation of a sidewalk on the south side of Crawford, adjacent to Crawford Street, installation of a hike bike path on the north side of Crawford Street extending over to Prairie Lane, and a protected crosswalk on Crawford Street at the Markley Road intersection. And so as we noted, Crawford Street is a minor arterial street, and Markley Road is a collector street in this location. So the only driveway access on Crawford would not be public access, but would be a fire apparatus exit onto Crawford. The remainder would have restricted access dedications with the exception of that opening. And so the lot for the fire station would contain 3.2 acres, and the detention area would be 1.36 acres, and that would be an undeveloped lot intended to serve as a drainage detention area. As part of this project, there's an eight-inch sanitary sewer line that runs under the proposed site of the fire station, and that public sewer line that runs north-south will be relocated and rerouted as part of the fire station development project to be, allow the building to be located as proposed. Quite a bit of attention was paid to drainage, and there were efforts made to coordinate the drainage for the fire station site with the ongoing look at drainage at the Berkeley Family Recreation Area. But the drainage study and possible drainage improvements at the ball fields has been temporarily put on hold, so the focus of the fire station drainage was runoff from the fire station only. And so based on that, staff received an updated storm drainage report from Cow Valley, and staff concurs that the existing retention pond that's there will fit within the easement and has the capacity in its current form to hold the runoff from the fire station Much to my surprise, having worked for the city for a number of years, I had no idea that that pond was not a detention pond and did not have an outlet, but it is a retention pond. And so what Cow Valley is proposing to do is to construct a weir at the north side of it so that if the pond reaches a certain level, then the water will go through that rear into the drainage ditch along Crawford. But as, it was always my belief that the detention pond was connected with the ditch that ran under Crawford Street, but it's not. It's a retention pond only. And if you go back and look at the original plans, it was built as a water feature for the park and was supposed to have picnic shelters and walking paths around it, so it was not built just for detention. But the, in terms of the dedications on this plat, Crawford Street north of the fire station site is not, does not have public right-of-way. It's a county roadway easement, and so this plat will create right-of-way for that along with Markley Road. There'll be utility easements for relocated sewer line and for the existing water line. And then the city engineer requested that a 30-foot-wide utility and drainage easement be proposed along the south 30 feet of the addition, and that would allow for a future ditch that would allow water from the ball fields to go around the existing retention pond to the east. And so we're doing this plat to set up for future ball field drainage improvements, but they won't be carried out at this time. And so the planning, in terms of a fiscal note, there will be a fiscal impact as a result of this action, including the improvement of Crawford Street as directed to staff at your steady session, as well as the ongoing maintenance of the abutting streets and the relocated sewer line. And the construction costs for the fire station are not related to the plat improvements themselves. So on February 20th, the planning commission voted to approve the final plat of Markley addition, including the stormwater detention retention plan, and that was made subject to a number of conditions, including responsibility for relocating the existing eight-inch public sewer line and completing the necessary drainage improvements. So if you concur with that action, your action tonight would be to make a motion to authorize and accept the offered street right-of-way utility and drainage easement and restricted access dedications on the plat and authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city. In the alternative, you could de- In the alternative, you could decline to authorize and accept those dedications and you could return this plat to the Planning Commission stating your reasons for not wanting to accept those dedications. As a follow-up action, separate from the plat itself, you may wish to consider directing staff to prepare a development agreement for your future consideration that would, one, formalize the city's commitment to the street improvements outlined in option six. And then that agreement would set the timing of those improvements. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have about the proposed plat.
Questions for Mr. Andrew. Thank you. Would the, I guess, applicant or Mr. Owens have any comments?
We do have Justin Owens here from Cow Valley, who's a design engineer on the project. We also have the chief here.
Justin Owens with Cow Valley Engineering. I'll just stand for any questions you might have.
So you would be involved in the design for the relocation of the sewer line?
Yes.
Okay. So just for your benefit, Cow Valley's role has primarily been on the civil side of relocating of the sewer line and also the drainage study and improvements.
Well, I did like the idea we're looking ahead with the drainage for the ball fields.
Right. We worked with staff to kind of, to maximize that detention as much as possible. So we've got not only what we need for this site and this development, but also hopefully detain any excess runoff we can off the ball fields as well.
Yeah, questions for Mr. Owen? Thank you. Any public comment? Bring it back for action.
The mayor moved to authorize and accept the acceptance of the offered street right-of-way utility and drainage easement and restricted access dedications from the City of Salina to serve the proposed Markley addition. A two-lot subdivision of a six-point-one-three-acre tract of unplanted land located at the north end of the Berkeley Family Recreation Area to create a platted building lot for a proposed new fire station facility to be located at the southeast corner of the East Crawford Street and Markley Road intersection.
Second. The motion is second. To accept the offered street right-of-way utility and drainage easement and restricted access dedications from the City of Salina to serve the proposed Markley addition of two-lot subdivision of six-point-one-three-acre tract of unplanted land at the north end of the Berkeley Family Recreation Area to create a platted building lot for a proposed new fire station to be located at the southeast corner of the East Crawford Street and Markley Road intersections.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew, am I correct that the motion should also authorize the mayor to sign the plat?
Yes. And authorize the mayor to sign the plat on behalf of the city.
Yeah, I don't believe that was mentioned in the motion, but.
Yeah, that, that motion came from the white sheet instead of the blue. Would you like to amend your motion to authorize the mayor to sign?
Please.
So amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Any interest on the commission of giving some guidance to staff on how you see the timing of the Crawford Street improvements playing out or whether you would like to have a chance to formalize that into some sort of agreement that would spell out the timing of those improvements as you see it?
The city would be on both ends of this.
Well, I'll defer to the city manager and city attorney on that side, but yes, you might be entering to an agreement with yourselves, but.
Had the previous study session that covered that pretty thoroughly, didn't we?
Yeah, I think by way of this motion, you've indicated your intent for the improvements, and we can certainly factor them in to the upcoming fiscal year budget for installation in 2025. If you want to formalize it more than that, we can try to come up with a way to enter into an agreement with ourselves.
Much leeway as you think you need to do it most efficiently.
I think that the approach you've selected is pretty straightforward. It's not nearly as broad in scope as some of the others, and so I think we can just factor it into future street plans.
Yeah, I think as we can get the work to flow all together, like moving the sewer line and drainage, it would probably be beneficial.
If you're comfortable with that, we'll coordinate accordingly.
So that will bring us to item 7.3B.
So item 7.3B is to approve ordinance number 23-1178 on second reading, changing the zoning district classification from A1 to PPF to allow construction of the fire station. That rezoning request area is a 4.57-acre tract of land located at the north end of the Berkeley Family Recreational Area. The proposed building site is located at the southwest corner of East Crawford Street and Markley Road and is addressed as 2600 East Crawford Street.
Okay, we had previously heard this item before we were passing ordinances on single first reading, so is there any discussion? Any public comment? Okay, bring it back for action.
Mayor Longbine, I move that we approve ordinance number 23-11178 on second reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 23-11178 on second reading. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivy?
Aye.
Commissioner Langowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. I think we're ready to build a fire station.
They now have a platted lot that's properly zoned, so.
Okay, it's been a process. That will bring us to other business. Any commissioner have an item or they want to bring up? That will bring us to citizens forum. Any have a comment that's not on today's agenda? Please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
I should give you one of these because I have a lot to say and I'm going to read fast, so.
Please state your name.
Tyler Sartain of Salina. It's been brought to my attention that the Salinas against BSL needs to clarify a few things regarding our 2022 petition. Yes, it did not come to fruition due to the length of time it took our lawyers going back and forth with the county counselor to come up with an acceptable petition form to use, which made it really hard for us to petition, especially in the cold weather. So in my hands are 1,600 signatures. That's pretty amazing. Back in 2022, we only needed 2,298. And this year, we only need 1,391. So now we have a head start. My suggestion to the commission would to request city staff to put the issue of repealing BSL on the agenda for next meeting, then vote to repeal it so we can save the city from having to waste more time and money for when this petition comes back fully signed and has to force the commission to either vote on it or send it to special election. I'd also like to ask, what is a dangerous dog? Recently, on an episode of King in the Community, city manager Mike said, and I quote, "But what we don't legally feel comfortable in doing is taking that pit bull in. And because we declared that breed and its entirety to be dangerous, we're not comfortable adopting it out to private citizens, even if they don't live in Salina," end quote. So again, what is a dangerous dog? If you said it's a breed, you'd be wrong. And according to city code, which is law, we already have a definition on what a dangerous dog is. City Code, Chapter seven, Article four, Section seven dash seven states, "Any dog which has attacked or bitten a person or domestic animal may be determined to be a dangerous dog." So by the stance the city staff has regarding pit bull type breeds and what the city code states are dangerous dogs, how can the City of Salina legally say pit bull type breeds are dangerous when the dangerous dog code states otherwise? That indicates all dogs must be banned and should not be adopted out to anyone because they have the ability to bite or attack a person or animal, making them dangerous. Also, why would the city want to send pit bulls out to any organization that allows pit bull adoptions to private citizens through their organizations if they believe these dogs are inherently dangerous? That doesn't make any sense. The, also, the Kansas Supreme Court ruling on BSL was on April 14th, 1989, almost 35 years ago. Today, with all the advances in science and animal medicines and animal behaviors, we have proof that pit bull type breeds are no more dangerous than any other breed, proof we've given this commission many times. Not to mention, the City of Overland Park, where this case was decided, repealed the ban in 2021, which would make the City of Salina's position on keeping the ban citing this ruling to be invalid. So let's just stop this craziness and just repeal the ban and let people decide what dogs they can and can't own. Thank you.
Deborah Corrales. So what I've given you today is a story of a man and his story with him and his pit bull. Dog bite prevention, what to do with, how to do that. Dog attacks that kill people aren't that common and pit bulls are not the culprit, main culprit. And I brought this one. Voters reject, and the reason I did was because I misstated. Springfield, Missouri did not vote to repeal their breed ban. They voted not to have a breed ban by 68%. So I wanted to clarify that I misspoke when I said that. There's also, a student wrote a report on the pit bulls and she wanted me to give it to you, so there it is. What I want to concentrate on today is Michael Vick's dogs. Over 49 dogs were taken from Michael Vick's fighting dog camp. Half automatically went to fosters because they weren't deemed traumatized. 22 were in need of rehabilitation. Of those 22, 20 passed the Canine Good Citizen Program. The two that didn't remained at Best Friends Animal Sanctuary their entire lives. Only one of those 49 dogs had to be euthanized due to trauma. Of those 20 dogs, five became therapy dogs, working with kids, the elderly, and cancer patients. Johnny Justice was the ASPCA Dog of the Year in 2014. They're all gone now, but what an impact they had on teaching us that breed doesn't make you aggressive. Saying that, they're all aggressive, is like saying all politicians are crooks, all men are idiots, and all women are always right. It's just not true. Thank you.
Rosemary Ma, Salina, Kansas. After last week's meeting, I decided to do some investigation. Let's put it on the pit bull thing, on how people respond to it. I called in the radio station, and for two days, they spoke about it, and not one person called in and was for that ban and the pit bull ordinance. I've also visited with people that are on my route when I walk my little dog. And one of them, one couple have trained dogs for 17 years. They said they do not want the ban taken off because that pit bull can turn on you in a minute. And I, between the senior citizen or senior center that I go to, the dog park that I go to, walking my dog, I have only come across two people that are undecided. All the rest of the people said, keep that ban on. One lady that I worked with during election, she said she wanted stronger ordinance on it. So that's just what I have encountered in my reports from visiting with different people. And I encourage the citizens of Salina to call in or email you commissioners and give their viewpoint on what they feel on the pit bull. That's the only way you guys are going to know how the citizens in this town feel. Thank you.
I can give you my point of view on the pit bulls. When you talk about Vick's dogs being rehabilitated, that's the key word, is they were rehabilitated. The only trouble with owning a pit bull for a lot of people, and the personal experience that I have, I'll get into here in a second, is they want these dogs to be vicious. My experience is, my old address, there was a pit bull next door to us. I saw a transaction of possible drugs being sold out of the home. And I think that pit bull was there for protection for the drug dealers, basically, because this dog was vicious. Every time he was in the backyard, if it wasn't for the fence between him and me, I would be mincemeat. He basically was chewing at the chain link, trying to get out to get to me. This dog had the look in his eye that he was vicious. So it's not so much the pit bulls. All pit bulls are not this way. It's the way they're raised, the way they're trained, and the way they're treated. If they're treated to be a attack dog or a dog for protection for something that is happening that they want protection for, this is the way the dog's going to turn out. And it can happen to any other dog, too, for that matter, but pit bulls for sure because the pit bull has in their genes, in their DNA, attack and attack only. Thank you.
These dogs are just defending their domain as any animal does. But I'm on another issue. How about our chemicals that you've seen in the newspapers, that PFS say in our water? We're taking out these dams in the western U.S. Also in Maine, on the east coast, in Oregon, Washington. They've taken out four dams already in southern Oregon, northern California. They blew them up. I watched it. They're going to take out more dams, so we're going to run out of water. We're going to take these dams out here at Conoplas, Milford, Tuttle Creek, because they were not built according to specifications. The Native Americans are exercising their rights. These rights have been confirmed in the U.S. Supreme Court twice. So you're going to have water problems here. We got a drought already, yet you let businesses come here and suck more water out of the ground. This water comes from the western part of Kansas, the Solomon River Basin, the Saline Basin, the Smoke Hill Basin, and it ends up here on the east side of Salina. So you're going to run out of water. This drought is coming. No, it's already here. So you're going to lose your water rights. This is already in the Tenth Circuit Court.
I noticed when I was looking at development of the city over the years, which is fascinating to see how life works its way on. And check the current, well, it's now more than that, but added some additional land to the city, within the city limits now. But before that addition, almost spot on the money, the City of Salina occupies, occupied, occupies, whatever, 50 times the area that the original town. We have 25 square miles within the city limits and 25 sections of ground is a lot of ground. And we started out with half a square mile, running from Front Street to Ninth and from north to south. What concerns me there as much as anything is that distance implies additional time and additional out-of-pocket expense because we're scattered. And it costs to drive a vehicle, costs to take the bus, and it also eats up a lot of time. And I've noticed that over the last years, that traffic just steadily increases, which way back when, when I was about that tall. way back when, when I was about that tall, the commercial district was very concentrated. It was downtown Salina. We have more people now, but nothing in terms of population per square mile like we had then. And the really handy thing about Salina, the way it was set up, then, is that just about anything you wanted to do, unless you had livestock to sell, you couldn't come downtown with your Herefords. But about anything else was in downtown Salina. And I, in my own personal experience, as frustrated and upset as my dad was with what had happened to downtown, with absentee ownership and whatever, he bought land outside downtown to move Kennedy and Co.
10 seconds, Mr. Ritz.
But never did, because of the advantages, downtown was where the action was. And so, I would certainly be concerned about that if I were you folks.
Thank you.
With the spread. So, anyway, okay.
Anyone else? Back to the dog issue. I just want to state that city staff is researching results of the Overland Park ordinance. And I look forward to those results. And as far as a petition and election, I think the city and county attorney would make that determination on whether those previous signatures are valid. This very well may come to a vote. City manager, have some.
I'm sorry, I thought you were moving on, and we've got one person online.
We have someone online.
Mr. Leibes, if you want to go ahead.
I've been saying about the dog ban for a while, just plain and simple. You know, as far as everything else, what was mentioned, water is correct. You know, and by the way, Mr. Davis, I may have, you may have said bird, not avian, one half does another, same thing. You did say that, by the way. I'm going to call you out on safety thing. You said you got to protect everybody. No, you can't, because you have to balance between safety and making slaves to law for everybody, and that's what you guys are doing currently. In addition, Mr. Davis, you don't leave that anyway, because over a year ago, I gave you a list of intersections. One of them, same intersection, I saw two accidents within the same month. And this went about same time that the turn, the no right turn on, at Salina Regional Hospital went up. And there's still nothing done now about that, for those intersections I mentioned. Now, I want to draw some, not conclusions, I'm just drawing a analogy between a corporation and a desk. If it was corporation and the CEOs, you guys, made a decision or didn't do anything to protect the citizens, say, traffic, or whatnot, the CEOs would be personally liable, because they knew of the dangers and all of that. Not saying it, because I don't need to do anything. I'm just speaking peace. I'm going to go into a little bit about Cozy's and freedom of speech. Twice, it has happened once, because I showed emotion and was escorted out by police. That was illegal, according to U.S. Supreme Court. And freedom of speech. Mr., I believe it was Mr. Longbine Mayor, Mr. Mayor, the last time I spoke in person there, you had made mention of fireworks going off. Okay, did you call the police and report it? No, sure didn't. Doubt would be my guess. And you are supposed to uphold, that means you need to do and call when you see a problem, Mr. Mayor, to the police. That's one, and I don't know which one of you did the whole horse crap downtown, who was representing that. But.
10 seconds, Mr. Leibes.
Okay. But, did you call the cops at that point in time for jaywalking? Because that's still in the books. My guess would be no. So, just saying. Thank you.
Okay. We have an executive session.
I'd just like to say one thing. I know we don't get into the habit of going tit-for-tat on this, but before anyone thinks that the city or the hospital was irres responsive, and what I think he's talking about, the right-hand turn lanes. If you're going east on South Street, you can't make a right turn on Santa Fe now, because the sign is up, no right turn on, right? You know, we sit here and take allegations of not being responsive, and it's easy when you have a one-way pot shot at somebody, knowing that we can't respond. But I think people should bring founded allegations if they're going to make statements like that.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Anything else? Brings us to an executive session. I am going to.
How many, 30 minutes?
Ask for a break.
You guys want a five-minute break? I knew that was coming. Okay. Mayor Longbine, I move the city commission recessed an executive session for 30 minutes with a five-minute break preceding that, to discuss with special legal counsel the subject of legal considerations relating to the Cozy Inn versus City of Salina case, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:17.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion to second to recess into executive session for 30 minutes for legal considerations. We will resume in this meeting at 7:17?
That's right.
Yep. I was going to round that. We're burning time here. Okay, do we? We need to take a vote. Ball in favor, say aye. Aye.
Mayor and commissioners, just a couple of housekeeping items. So, those in attendance, in addition to yourselves, will be myself, City Legal Counsel Greg Banksen, outside legal counsel Amanda Jokers will be online via Zoom, as well as Todd Messenger, both from Fairfield and Woods, special counsel that we've engaged. And then Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood, Assistant City Manager Sean Hennessy. I don't believe Lauren Driscoll has remained on the line, but that might be a possibility. And then, secondly, there's a small possibility you might take action. We'll just see how the conversation goes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back in session and we are going to need to request more time.
Okay. Mayor Longbine, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with special legal counsel the subject of legal considerations relating to the Cozy Inn versus City of Salina case based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:39.
I'll second.
Okay, we have motioned as second to recess into executive session for an additional 20 minutes. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:39.
As before, myself, City Legal Counsel Greg Bankston, Special Counsel Amanda Jokerst, and Todd Messenger, Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood, and Assistant City Manager Sean Hennessy.
Okay, we are back in session and we are going to need to request more time.
Okay. Mayor Longbine, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with special legal counsel the subject of legal considerations relating to the Cozy Inn versus City of Slayna case based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion to second to recess into executive session for an additional 20 minutes. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:39. All in favor, say aye.
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 As before, myself, City Legal Counsel Greg Bankston, Special Counsel Amanda Jokerst, and Todd Messenger, Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood, and Assistant City Manager Sean Hennessy.
Okay, we are back in session and we have no action to take.
Mayor Longby, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All on paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you. Okay, we are back in session and we have no action to take.
Mayor Longby, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All on paper say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.
...